While the meeting's hard, our first order of business will be the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone to our July 18th meeting. We've got a full agenda, so we'll get moving here. First item will be the consent agenda, which includes June 18th, 2024, regular council meeting minutes, the July 8th, 2024 council workshop minutes, request to use a parking lot for Pine Island Wrestling fundraiser, Collins Park rental fee waiver request, Trailhead Park rental fee waiver request, along with Resolution 24-25, accepting monthly donations. So I have a motion to accept.
I'll move to uh move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
You have a motion and second. Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to uh add something under administration. It'll be number I or letter I, uh the Relief Association to discuss the C24.
You have a motion to amend the add item I. Is there a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Dave, Jason.
Aye.
David will be five. Alright, we'll get into public input. Do you have any written correspondence?
We do, however, um that individual is also here to give public input, so we'll just kind of do it all together.
Excellent. We'll go to Mr. Terry Lynn, will be presenting a Pine Island Cheese Festival recap. Good evening.
Good evening. So like every year, I feel it's important to come back to our mayor and council and provide a recap of the cheese festival. And I'm pleased to advise that we had another successful year and that our committee and financials are the strongest they've ever been. This year, we had the following successes, which included increasing our net income of almost forty percent over last year, which came from increased sponsorships, increased carnival sales, and interest that we've earned from CDs by investing our funds when we don't need to use them. Uh we invested an additional seven thousand dollars towards the total ten thousand dollars of fireworks, which we had less complaints about, so I'm assuming it all went good. Uh we made a recent investment in our website, which was also helpful in streamlining advanced sales for tickets, stocks and buttons, and our vendor registrations efficiencies. And then we were able to make community donations of eighteen hundred dollars to different organizations that we pulled in to help volunteer like cleaning tables, cleaning up the fireworks, things like that. Uh we were able to add the new Vinoplas cheese and wine market into the Creamery this year as a new event. We attempted to bring back with the help of um some outside forces, the garden tractor pull, but whether it didn't work out in our favor. Um and I honestly, I couldn't be more proud and grateful for our committee. I think we we have a really great group and they put in months of planning. Um so very grateful for that with them. And that being said, with great success and growth comes growing pains. While we have significantly more square footage by having the festival at Trailhead Park that the city had invested in uh for us, we are growing out of that space. Um we're having to turn away vendors, which is ultimately lost revenue and are limited in space to continue to expand the festival grounds um in order to add different events and options, which we're always trying to do, um which also draws people into our community, which is the ultimate goal. Um it's also been a goal of ours to try and funnel traffic to our businesses in town so that they may benefit from the traffic and volume of people during the festival weekend. So I'm coming before you today with also the ask that um city council and the festival planning committee can start working together to ideate and plan how we may be able to expand our festival space, um as well as potentially reviving the discussion of a footbridge, which could help kind of bridge some of that traffic to our main street businesses. Um and lastly, working to have a true emergency plan in the event of festival flooding, because we came really close this year, a little too close for comfort. Um and so those are just my asks. I'd also be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to extend my deepest gratitude and appreciation to our public works department and our fire department. These two departments put in endless hours leading up to during the festival, and especially this year, they had to do even more after. So we are blessed beyond measure with that partnership and with you guys, and I thank you. And do you have any questions?
It was the very fun weekend and well organized. Very much appreciate that. And like you said, the uh collaboration between the committee and the city departments. So Sunday night went off well and we were able to get things done very, very quickly. So that was, that was a testament to the communication skills and just the good work and relationships. And I would say too, it'd be worth uh starting that conversation in City Hall and getting the ball rolling sooner than later, because I think you have some very solid ideas.
Great job.
That just means everybody's so funny. Thank you.
You're getting voted in again or?
No, this is my last, this could be my last year. I don't know. We'll see.
I love how you changed that.
I know, aren't you guys getting tired of me? Fixed up. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Alright, sir.
Yeah, thank you. I guess first I want to apologize. I didn't make the last council meeting when my variance request was on the agenda, so I guess that's uh I wasn't unfortunately unable to make it, so I guess that's kind of what I I guess kind of I I believe you guys all got the letter I put because that's why I don't want to sit there and rehash everything. Uh but I guess what I'm just looking for is some guidance and collaboration from the city is as far as what I'm trying to do. And I guess I think I did a poor job when I went to the planning and zoning, because I don't, this is a new process to me. I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing. Basically, I think I went to Steve at City Hall and said, hey, this is what I want to do. And he said, oh, but probably the easiest way to get that done is to do a variance request. And then that's kind of when we had the discussion. I'm like, well, I don't really think I fall in the parameters of the variance request. But he's, you know, because it's, I don't, I don't, I don't think I met all the criteria, and I kind of knew that going in, but they said, hey, it's basically up to the city what we're gonna do. And I guess, so I look at it more, I don't think I was asking for a variance request more than I was asking for an exemption from the city code or trying to understand the city code of not allowing a main street or a main uh street level apartment on in the city or business or business district.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess I look at that code and say, hey, we want to keep apartments off Main Street. I guess that's how I understood the code and the intent of the code. But I don't know if that's different, but that's, I guess, my understanding of the code. And then now where I'm at with my business, I've been, you know, in business here for over twenty-five years. Uh my business is expanding, so this isn't just me wanting to build an apartment to have an apartment. It's no, I need more office space for my office, and then if I'm gonna do this, oh, this would actually benefit me personally. I can, you know, within the post-COVID era now, instead of work from home, I want to actually live at work, which is, so it's dual purpose. So I don't, I don't want to sit here. I I guess I've always want to be very transparent. I don't want to say I'm building an op-, you know, it's office space, and then I I spend the, spend the night in my office and say, alright, is that, is that against the law? Or can I do that? Or can I not do that? Uh because I see we have businesses in town with boards on their windows. On Main Street, we have vacant, you know, a construction business that's never there. We have empty businesses on Main Street, so I guess when planning and zoning came, we'd say, oh, we're gonna lose uh business, you know, it's a business space that we might not use. I'm like, well, really, it's a business space that I can use, but it's dual purpose. So I'm trying to find some guidance as to, is there collaboration that we can do with, hey, if I say, hey, if I make the living quarters on the second floor or the sleeping quarters on the second floor, is that now considered a second floor apartment instead of a, because I have, you know, enough space to lock it, or what avenues can I have along with, again, the additional business aspects that I'm gonna have with with buildings. So I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what to do is kind of where, why I came here today and hopefully.
No, absolutely. Mike, this is where I would, I would say during public info like this, generally not, not a decision-making portion of the meeting.
Okay.
Uh given that you had already gone through the the um request with the planning and zoning. And then they they had made that motion to deny, denied the request. And if you're, if you're looking to revamp that in any way, is where you need to resubmit that. And that's, and that's going through state statute. It's not where the council's trying to manipulate or make it difficult. We have to follow state guidelines as well. And so that's where I would recommend if you're looking for some guidance to to reach back out to to City Hall um and get that process. There's an appeals process. I don't, I'm really told about that.
Well, yeah, and now again, that's where I'm, I'm questioning, because really, it's not a variance request that I'm asking for. Because again, you go by the rules of variance requests. I don't need the requirements.
Okay.
Right? I mean, is that, would that, I'm, that's what I'm trying to understand. That's kind of why I came here to figure, how do I figure this out? Because I go back to, well, no, this is a variance. So, you know, then planning and zoning, so what's up with City Council? It's not up to us, because you guys have the final say. So it's so that's where I'm trying to get input to say, this is what I want to do. Can I get input for you? Are you guys okay with it? Or are you guys not okay with it? I guess, can I get, is that something we can have discussion on or not?
Well, there's a, there's absolutely always room for discussion, absolutely. But I'm gonna say like right now, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make a decision on this.
Uh yeah, I'm not asking for a decision. I guess maybe if I'm gonna go through the process of either, I guess, a-asking for a new, you know, going back to city and planning and saying, I'm gonna revise my, my variance request or whatever. I just want to know if I do all this, what are you guys gonna say? I mean, this is what I want to do. Are you guys okay with it? Is that something that we can have?
So usually.
Informally?
Yeah, usually what we would do is we would take what planning and zoning would have to say. So approaching them and saying, hey, how can we make this happen? Might be your best approach. Um and with your address still being the same, there would be, my understanding is, a need for a variance, because your address doesn't change to an alleyway address, just because it's in the back of the building.
Well, I, I guess that's part, this isn't gonna be my permanent residence. It's just, uh, I have a second residence in St. James. This is, again, a convenience saying, I'll be here two, you know, two to three nights out of the week. And I don't want to sit here and play game out of you guys.
Yeah. So definitely approaching planning and zoning and working with them. I don't think like, if you want to bring it as an immediate, like, this is what I want to do, as more of having a discussion with them of how can we make that happen? Uh because there might be, like you said, a second floor, building more office space and building a loft. Like maybe there's a loophole there or something that planning and zoning can work with you and help you be able to accomplish your goals.
Hey Bobby, do you have any, any thoughts on that, on that approach?
I, I do, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Great. Yeah. Sorry I'm not there tonight, Mayor. I, I had a little illness and I didn't want to come and cough on you, so I apologize for not being there tonight. Um, yeah, so I hear the uh, the, the resident uh making the argument, uh which is not uncommon, uh that uh, you know, residential uses might be appropriate on the ground floor in a business district. That's something that many cities are considering. Um, you know, and uh, I, I don't think it's a variance issue or a um, I mean, under the current city code, it's just not allowed, right? I mean, it's just not permissible and there, there is not a way around that currently. If somebody wants to present the idea that that should change, that the planning commission should consider proposing to the council that that change, then I think the resident, the, the, the fellow, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but you're at the podium. If, if you want to uh pursue that, maybe you can, you know, talk to staff about how to go to the planning commission with a proposal to change the code to allow that. I don't know where the council is on that, whether you want to consider allowing residential uses on the ground floor or not in your business district. That would be a little bit unusual in, in business districts, but, you know, that would be, normally, we would say to this resident, if you want to do that, propose that to the staff. The staff will help you through the process. You can present that to planning commission and we'll go from there. But there, there is not a current process to allow uh that to happen.
No, we, we have, and the council's had conversations about this topic now going back several years. And like you said, Bob, too, that uh a number of communities have taken um conversations regarding this subject. Um and it's something that I think that's definitely changed since 2020, so yeah, if we can at least give uh Nathan some guidance on, on, you know, starting with the city staff to, to make that inquest or that would be appropriate. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, then that's my question, because that's kind of, this seems like a bond duty. I don't know how big a process this is, so that's kind of where I think we came. That goes back to, it's a, the variance request is just an easy way for you guys to grant me permission to do this.
So you, yeah.
So instead of rewriting the code, that's, I guess, that's what I'm asking, because I think that's where planning and zoning got caught up in the, the intricacies of the variance request and the requirements of a variance request. And again, what I'm seeing, it's like, no, this isn't just a resident. So that's where I guess it's kind of this unique situation. So I'm like, is there an easy way to do this? Can I just bring up? Maybe I don't, do I have to change code? Or can we say, hey, that's now with my input from the variance request, can we just reconsider that?
You're not moving there. You're not moving there.
No, no.
So you're just asleep.
It's, yeah, it's a, yeah.
So I mean, yeah, it, I don't have.
Yeah, so make, make that request to come through the, through the City Hall and.
So what request am I, I guess I'm, what request am I?
So you're, you're asking for uh, to me, it sounds like you're asking for an adjustment, because I mean, I, I'll be upfront too. I want to make sure, and given this is going longer than we typically go.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So uh I would say I will not permit any situation to try to pit council against committee.
Right.
So I want to make sure that we go correctly with that. So that's what I'm saying. If you're looking to, to have that uh an adjustment to the variance, that would be a letter that would go through City Hall and then it would have to come back to council, ma- making sure that meets the correct parameters. Uh because like Bob said too, this is, this is new territory.
Mm-hmm.
Um, many cities have that force. There, there's no one size fits all. So we're, we want to make sure that we don't have a wrong person, so. Does that sound correct, Bob?
Yeah, no. So Mayor, I, I, I think it does sound totally correct. I think you have it exactly right. Uh, um, my, my understanding is we're, we're past the variance request, right? I mean, we're now at um do we want to allow this as a city or not? And I think that's a fundamental policy thing that the planning commission ha- would have to consider. So um, you know, um correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, please, but I, I thought we've, we've we've moved beyond the variance request now, right? We've denied that, so that's over, and so we're moving on. And if the resident wants to ask the planning commission, consider something different, that, that we can do that. Um, they have to make the request. Am I right about that?
I thi- I think that's how it sounded. The, the letter we got was a little bit, the letter we got included in the packet has some adjustments compared to what was first presented. So I guess that's where I was asking if it, you know, if there's some updates or changes to that, if that would make any kind of a impact on the initial request that was denied.
Yeah, no, no. I mean, it's, it's not allowed. I mean, currently, it's not allowed. And so, I mean, look, I mean, the residents make the point, if you are in a building and you're working on the building and you fall asleep while you're working, are we gonna treat that as a zoning violation? No, of course not. But if you live in the building on the first floor, that's not allowed. So um, you know, that's where we are. And could the city reconsider that? Could we consider allowing you know, living units on the first floor in the business district? Sure, of course, the council can, can consider that, but I, I'm not sure why. Uh, you know, so uh it seems to me we've made the decision, we don't want to do that, but maybe we should reconsider that. And so if the resident wants to make a, I'm sorry, I don't know your name. I'd be using your name if I did. Yeah. Yeah. So I, if, if you want to make a, a request, you know, to, to reconsider that, go ahead. But, you know, uh generally speaking, cities like Pine Island that have downtowns that are definable downtowns don't allow, you know, apartment living on the main level. That's typical. Uh but m- maybe we should reconsider that, and so let us know if we should. Uh make a request if we should.
And that's my question, because my building is unique. The portion of the building, my, that portion isn't on the business district. It's not on.
Yeah.
No.
Well, and so now, Mayor, you should cut me off here, but I mean, ma-, you know, I, it sounds to me like you're making an argument that you really should be part of the business district, that you're somehow outside of that, and that's a different issue. And so, yeah, well, so that's a different question. So regardless of, uh, uh, we should talk, stop talking here during the council meeting, but you, you should go ahead and ask staff if you want to rezone your property, like it's not part of downtown, then that's a different question. But that's something you should work with Elizabeth and you know, talk to the staff about how to, how to deal with that. I, it's not, I can't help you with that right now.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright. We're gonna move on to administration. Item A, which is a public hearing ordinance.
Then we have one more for that, or were we addressing this? Okay. Sorry.
I will go out. Item B, which is public hearing ordinance number 168, changing the regular council meeting time. So we're looking at moving the meeting time from seven PM to six PM.
Correct. So the, all of the other um the date of the meeting would stay the same. It would continue on as the third Tuesday of every month, um but it would be moved forward one hour um from seven to six. This is a change to our ordinance, so it does require a public hearing before council.
So th- this was mine. I, I was just approached by a bunch of uh citizens about starting it earlier. So I brought it up and I have no problem starting at six. But, do anybody else thinks?
Um, take a motion to open for public hearing.
I'll move.
Nope, go ahead.
I'll move to open for public hearing.
Motion and second. Vernon.
Yes, yeah, I.
Randy.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
David is, I, anybody from the public have any conversation or comments about moving the city council from seven PM to six PM? Same day of the week, we're just moving it up an hour and in public input. Thoughts, concerns?
There will be multiple public hearings um during this meeting. So if you're here to talk about shoreland or something like that, there will be a separate public hearing for that once this is done.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Super irrelevant what your lawyer thinks. Um, but I'll say it anyway. Um, that would be great from my perspective. Um, right? So, you know, if I can get down there an hour earlier and get home, you know, before ten o'clock, that would be fantastic.
We just like having you around, Bob.
Yep, and I apologize again for the nineteenth time for not being there. I'm sorry.
Twenty once, twice. Take the motion to close public.
So moved.
It's all second.
Second, Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
David is, I, which will bring us to item B, ordinance number 168, changing the regular council meeting time from seven PM to six PM.
I'll move ordinance number 168.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other conversation? For those of you who are avid council attendees, please adjust your time in the future. Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
David is, I. Passes. We will move on to item C, which is a public hearing for ordinance number 169, updating the shoreline and management overlay district.
So a little backstory on this one. Um the city was notified last year um by the Minnesota DNR that we, in, we needed to adopt a shoreline overlay zoning district um ordinance. There are certain requirements for when cities have to do this. Um, we did not from the onset due to our size. However, there are certain events that trigger review by the DNR that they can then impose these requirements. Um, if you recall, I believe it was last year, the city um annexed uh Elmer's, a portion of Elmer's stocks land into city limits. That then triggered a review by the DNR since that property was near um what is considered to be the shoreline. They did find that due to the different um forks of the Zomba River in town, Pine Island did meet the requirements um per Minnesota state statutes and the Minnesota administrative rules. There's a whole laundry list of them in the staff report um that requires the municipality to have this. Um, the main point of this is to set certain standards um for development and use within uh the shoreline area um to try to maintain that shoreline area, cut down erosion, things like that. Um this ordinance before you is based on a model ordinance provided by the Minnesota DNR. Um, they put together what their requirements are that we have to include. They give it to us, and we then whittle it down. Include the information that is pertinent, pertinent to us, remove a lot of the information that's not. Um, it was much longer. A lot of it had to do with lakefront property. We, of course, have no lakes in town. Um, ours was all river specific, so we were able to weed out a lot of that. Um it was reviewed by um Craig as well as a hydrologist with Wit Seth. Um, they provided their input. We ran it through Bob's office. He provided his input. We then sent it back for conditional approval from the DNR. We got their stamp of approval. Once we approve a final version, we'll send it back to the DNR. They will then give us final approval. This is again a change to our zoning ordinance, so it will require a public hearing. Um, we can kind of just address questions as they come, as well as we do have written correspondence from residents.
Long section of packet. So, council, I will take the motion to open for public hearing.
I'll move to open for public hearing.
Second.
We have motion and second. Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
And David is, I, we officially open up council meetings for a public hearing uh pertaining to the uh shoreline management overlay district conversation. So if there's uh any member of the public here that would like to uh ask questions or have concerns or comments, you're more than welcome to address uh the council and those in attendance here. I would just ask that you come up to the lecture here, introduce yourself and list your address.
Um, Mayor, if you'd like, I can start out with the written correspondence, maybe kind of knock out some questions there off the bat. Um, received a letter from Andrew and Aaron Bus located at uh 1003 Rodeo Drive Southeast. Um, they submitted a letter. It should be a handout to your packet there. Um, they brought up concerns uh regarding the current state of um erosion in the neighborhood. Um, they didn't feel that they were getting sufficient um help from the city, Olmsted County Soil and Water, um the DNR to address those. Um, they also had some concerns regarding what the ordinance require, or deems uh shoreline property. Um, the DNR's definition is three hundred feet from the ordinary high water level or OHWL. Um, they point out that down in the rodeo drive area, that does include parts of the south part of the street as well as the front part of the street. Um, they are concerned about burdens um on property owners as far as permitting and things go. Um, just to address a few of those, um they specifically point out um requirements for permitting for um deck projects, fill projects, things like that. Um, those are already projects that would require a building permit um from the city. The review of the short, this new shoreline would fall under the review of the existing permitting process anyways. There wouldn't be any um additional processes that would be added um outside of, I believe, wastewater treatment systems that I don't believe are going in that area anytime soon. I know Craig maybe had some specific erosion information um on that property as well.
Uh, yeah, uh, maybe council, uh, so I did review the property in the letter. And I didn't, uh, flooding, um, it does uh pretty much go right up to the back of the back of the house. Uh, it's like, it doesn't lock. We'll be over. Back of the house, um, as it, it doesn't walk, uh, over. Really what we're talking about is that shoreline overlay district, and what that is, that's defined by the state, so that does, that language of the three hundred feet from the river, that is, is, uh, state statute, so. So that's what. Districts is a lot.
Sorry. Sorry, wasn't on there, but that three hundred feet again is the statutory language, so that's, um, that's what was, uh, is being proposed to be adopted by the city as well, so. The D N R has reviewed that area hydrologist, uh, we need to get their input as well. Um, uh, but this is standard language that is in that standard, um, ordinance. Any questions at all?
Well, I, this is the first time we saw this letter from this.
Yeah.
From this. Address, so, I, I guess I'm a little discouraged by the comments that the city's not taking any action. Concerns have been brought forth because I've not heard from them before, so I don't like the idea that the city is being attacked with inaction. Um. You know, and I guess Craig, what you're saying too is like, there's guidelines that the city has to follow as well when it comes to any kind of shoreline. And I, uh, especially with those houses along, uh, Zombo River right there. Uh, you know, they're in the floodplain down there, so that's, that creates another challenge, and, you know, when you read through this, the guidelines that are in, uh. This document that we are having to discuss right now, part of it too falls back on making sure. People are not trying to manipulate shoreline that's causing erosion and things like that. Uh, where the D N R encouraged people to allow grasses to maintain so it can help with erosion. Uh, so I. You know, in, in this draft that they're looking at right now, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a heavy duty draft, it's a lot of information in it. You know, and that worked under by, by what the D N R is stipulating as well that city leader to follow.
Mister Mayor, if I, if I may, um, I do want to address the fact, um, I have spoken with Mister Bus, um, in the past. So he has spoken with city staff, we actually, um, both Craig and Todd and I. Uh, have worked on that issue, and essentially what it. Evolved into is we actually had a D N R hydrologist come out and look at the back end of their property. Um, they walked the entire rodeo drive, and the D N R hydrologist is the one who then gave us the information that. Um, essentially, what they were, those neighbors, what they're asking for is for the city to rip wrap the entire, their backyard to help, um. Stop the erosion, and the hydrologist essentially said the city shouldn't do that, because if we don't, if we don't do the entire river. Well, all we're doing is pushing the erosion further down the neighborhood of what isn't rip wrapped, and that's when the hydrologist should. Um, ask that people stop mowing lawns and that we need to focus more on natural grasses and things like that. And so by removing trees and by people mowing their lawns all the way to the riverfront, they're actually assisting in that erosion, so I did just want to touch on that, that we have worked with them. Um, however. There's limited things the city can do unless we, we do a complete overhaul of the entire riverbank through city limits.
Yeah. Which would be very, very costly. To do that, um, council, any input from your end of the table on there?
Looks like there's a, a lot we can really do, I mean, required. To have a lot of this in here. And I understand their frustration.
And I would also point out that this ordinance itself doesn't implement any. Rip wrapping or anything to. Do anything about past erosion, it's really just setting up a zoning district that has rules in place for development going forward. Um, so it's to help with future erosion, um, and try to limit that, it, the, some. Erosion, um. Planning through Olmsted Soil and Water Conservation and things like that would be kind of a separate issue, um, that the city can broach. As they please, but this is really just about the zoning district, not. Flood mitigation or erosion.
Any, um, comment from those in attendance that little ones on row, if you have questions, I would like. Sure, come on up and introduce yourself. Thanks for coming tonight.
Yes, thank you, correct. Um, my name is Craig Berg, I live at, um, I'm one of Andrew's neighbors at one zero zero five Rodeo Drive, um, southeast. Um, so as far as, uh, communication with the city. Um, it goes back to, um, I've got Andrew's initial email here from July thirty first of twenty twenty two. Um, to Ms. Howard, the D N R, uh, Olmsted Soil and Water Conservation District. Um, I myself have sent, um, at least two or three emails as well, along with, um. Numerous of our, of, um, our neighbors, uh, that live along. So there has been, uh, quite a bit of correspondence back and forth, not just what you're reading here tonight. Um, so. As you've heard, um, you know, we do have concerns with the erosion that's taking place. Um. Every time it floods, um, you know, we get it, we live along a river, right, that's. Part of living along a river, but every time it floods, it, it. Just causes a, a massive amount of erosion, brings in flood debris, um, behind my house right now from the flood that, uh, currently just took place. Uh, there's a massive amount of debris in the river, um, as far as, you know, mowing grass and all of that. The erosion is taking place all along the river on both sides, you know, on the other side where it's not mowed and it's natural. There's just as much erosion taking place, so I don't think it's. You know, something that's pertaining to that because it's happening all over. Um, when I read the shoreline, um, this, the change to the ordinance here. I see a lot of rules and regulations as far as development and all of that, and that's what I'm hearing as well, I don't see anything as far as. Kind of the city's plan to manage the actual waterway and the erosion and all of that, it's more just like rules and regs and development and. You know, buildings and decks and all of that, um, I'm curious, is that, is that something that? The city is going to look into of like. You know, how is the, the waterway going to be managed? I guess that's a question for you.
No, that's a fair, that's a very fair question, I think, part of that falls back to, um, when we've had conversations, I would say over the last year, two years.
Yeah.
Like with, uh, our emergency management addressing waterway manager. Uh, trying to keep the debris clear and things like that, uh, with the, I would say the erosion component to that. Um, definitely has been compounded since twenty ten. When, you know, when the water's been moving too faster, just because we have, uh. You know, we don't have a dam down by the, no, so the water's moving too much faster, so that's a very fair question. For the council to look at, you know, as, as the development's moving forward.
Yeah, and so when I initially, um, emailed, uh, my initial email here was September fifth of twenty twenty two. Um, I had, um, Mrs. Howard on there, um, the D N R, uh, I had. Uh, numerous people from the D N R, the council, or the, um, Soil and Water Conservation District, um, I got a lot of correspondence back from them about coming out and doing. A survey and, and in here, they state, there was a lot of sources of money available potentially. Whether that be grants or, uh, other sources, either from the state, federal government, they, they reference it in here. Um, it says there may be funding available for stream bank restoration projects from a variety of sources, but without discussion on. What may be proposed slash project consent, the cost you will do to work, et cetera. Um, I have no way of, of knowing what funding may be available or grant funding, and this was from Skip Lang or from the Olmsted Soil and Water Conservation District. So I think there is, you brought yourself or brought it up about the cost, and I get it, it, there is a, probably an expense to it, and. And a significant one at that, but I think. Through the state or the county or the federal government, there are funding sources available. Um, if it's looked into and or applied for.
And that, and I, I'll reiterate, when I, when I said about communication, I'm referring to the council.
Okay.
So I don't want you to think that I'm, I'm accusing of not committing to City Hall, I'm talking about with council, because I, we like to hear that too, so I appreciate you, you speaking tonight, you know, to be able to share those. Those concerns, you know, so we're made of there too, um, to be able to include those, those, um, concerns in our decision making, right?
Sure.
Um, so I apologize, I don't want you to think I was saying that there is no communication. For the city proper, so. No, and I, I like. I like the fact that, you know, we have an opportunity to, to address, given like Steven said, tonight, we're looking more at the, the zoning components of this. Of this ordinance, uh, but being able to include some thought on, on the, the erosion mitigation moving forward, uh. I just, I don't feel like it's going to be something that's going to be decreasing, and we're seeing that with the weather, and how that's. We're getting, we're getting a change in the weather, that's, that's directly affecting.
Yeah, and, and to that extent, um. You, the city, you know, it's essentially the state has, um, put it on the, the localities, the municipalities, the cities to, like. This is your, you know, your issue more than it is ours, um, and I don't. Expect the city to take it on, you know, by itself and be like, yeah, we're going to take on this expense, we're going to do this new project just at the city level. I think collaboration with, you know, city, state, county, whatever it takes, D N R is.
Absolutely.
You know, where the, the project is going to grow legs, so. Um, that's what I've got for it, I know there's some of my neighbors that may want to speak, but. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Um, and maybe this would be a good time, uh, we do have a work session coming up in August, um, maybe some. Erosion control, flood, or river clearing options, funding sources, um, could be something we have a discussion, add that to the agenda in the August work session. Um, I've gotten to know Lucas, our D N R hydrologist, pretty well these last couple of months, so, um, he can be able to give us some information, I can bring that to the work session in August.
Hello. Hi, Lori Ewald, one thousand one Rodeo Drive, so the neighbor on the other side of Andrew and Aaron. Just wanted to reinforce and offer support for everything like Craig said, I've lived in my house at Rodeo Drive since two thousand three. And how the river has rerouted itself in that twenty one years has been pretty incredible, so I just want to reinforce. Anything the neighbors can do to help and, uh, explore options for erosion control and mitigation. I also want to thank the person that took all the lakefront regs out of there because it was sort of painful enough to read that document the way it was. Um, so I appreciate the efforts made to abbreviate it, but, thank you.
It was a hefty, hefty document.
And to hear that there was more to it, when I read it, I'll be honest, I thought it looked like a necessary, like rules and regs, like, okay, this fits some definitions, so this has to go. I guess my question would be, as those of us who live with the, with the river in our backyard. What is different with this in place, I mean. What, what's the operational, what's different for us, like? Is there anything actionable? Like, if there's a dead tree. We can cut it down and burn it, or, to be honest, the debris that's floated in over the, over twenty one years.
Yeah.
We'll gather that up, make a pile, get the appropriate burn permit and burn it. Is that wrong? Or, or is there any implication for what this is, sorry, I'm probably straying, of course, a little bit too much here.
No, that's, that's a fair question, any kind of dealing with the D N R gets very, very complicated, and, so, yeah.
And maybe it's one that can't be answered right now, but I just wanted to launch there, kind of the, what's different when we walk out of here?
So.
What?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay, I was just gonna say too, um, if people have specific questions about their property, like what they can and can't do, I mean, we are always willing to. Meet with individuals, um, you know, so if, if people want to know what's changed, obviously everything in the past, this is just for any new development. And so we're more than happy to talk about individual properties, um, with people at City Hall.
Mr. Roy? How you doing, sir?
Yeah, good, good. I'm Rory Larson, I live on, on Lily Lane, and I've experienced, uh. High water, you know, it didn't come into the, uh, my home this time. But I guess that's been a history. Of, uh, flooding back there. Uh, since the. That street was developed. Uh. I just have thoughts of being able to. Clean out, you know, that waterway. I don't imagine there's, uh, you can't reroute it, I don't think, by, by the rules of, uh, D N R. Uh, but just to get that debris. Out of the, uh, the waterway, you know, make it water if possible, you know, when we have heavy rains. Uh. Thank you.
No, absolutely, thank you, sir.
Hi, Robert Carter, three one three West Center Street. Um, the, the notice that I got about the meeting was the first information that I had about this. I didn't get anything, anything else, I didn't know how to look up what was going on, it would have been nice. To, in the, in the letters or something to give me more, show me where to get the access to the information. You know, so that I, I knew what was going on.
No, absolutely.
Um, an email link or something like that, you know, would have just been nice.
To get, to access the information.
Right.
Sure, absolutely.
So I believe in the public hearing notice, there was the U R L for our website, for the page that that draft document was.
Is it, okay, alright, my mistake, thank you.
Any else? Press, we will take the motion to close public hearing, you know?
Frank, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, but.
No, it's just referring to the question about the, uh, you know, what's the impact of the sound offices and properties, and really, um, just regulates any sort of, so a, uh, application. So, for instance, a pad. Previously. Required, so, in the, bar, or, and, uh, some of the. Impact is from this, but, uh, it's really no different than what.
Isn't it just adding an extra level?
Yep, it's just adding a little bit.
Because we'd have to abide by them anyway.
That's all.
Thank you.
Alright, council.
I'll move to close. Okay.
Second.
For a motion in a second to close public hearing. Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
I.
Jason.
Hi.
David is I, which brings us to item D, ordinance number one six nine, updating the shoreline management overlay district. Making any discussion or update for this? If you could, oh.
We're just asking for a move on.
We're just, yep, we're just looking for a motion. Who, oh, sorry. Plus you guys have further questions, plus you have further questions.
This is just going back to the updates of its when it was.
Right.
So we're just looking for motion, yeah.
We. Table it out until after our work, work, uh, workshop to.
So he, if I correct Steven, Steven says like this draft thing will go back to the D N R, and then they have to prove final draft that would be sent back.
So this will be our final draft, it'll get sent to the D N R, they essentially just stamp it whether it.
It's approved.
Yep, so it won't come back to us for another vote, um. I guess. When it comes to erosion and river clearing and things like that, those wouldn't be things that would get included in this document anyways, those would be more. Projects or action items that we would. Do separately.
We have cleaned up through in the past, I do know that. Okay, I'll move ordinance one six nine.
One second. We have motion in a second, Vernon, that.
A motion in a second, or in that ordinance number one six nine, any other discussion, council? Otherwise, um, everybody that came out tonight for public input, thank you. Uh, for your participation, bringing your concerns, very much appreciated. Especially council appreciates hearing from you, so thank you. Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David will be I. Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-six is a proven summary publication for ordinance number one six nine, so we can make this.
Yep, so this, uh, state statutes allows us to publish a truncated summary of the ordinance as opposed to the full twenty-nine pages. That'd be very costly. Uh, so we will publish in the news record a summary of that, but the full document, um, will be available online or at City Hall.
Can you speak to my bike?
I'll move resolution twenty-four twenty-six.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David is I. Paper. Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-seven is approving parcels splits to complete Prairie Island Indian community property sale. Kind of some new sentence here.
Yep, so this is related to the excess right-of-way land sale to. Um, Prairie Island Indian community, there was a portion of that that the city wished to retain, it's about eleven acres. To facilitate retaining that, um, we have to split, um, a few of the parcels. So there are a few exhibits, I don't know if Craig wants to run through which is which and which needs to be split.
Yep, and council, so this is, um, so the first exhibit, this exhibit A, that is the one that goes. Uh, with the resolution, so that points out all of that, uh, right-of-way, which is. Uh, a little bit wider now, so what we're, what we're, um, requesting is that with this resolution. Uh, that it is giving the authority to go ahead and, uh, split these parcels. So then the, uh, smaller parcels that are shown on like this exhibit B and all of these highlighted parcels. Uh, these can be conveyed then to Prairie Island Indian. So we're taking the larger parcels, splitting up them, splitting them up into, um, smaller chunks, and then that is what the, the lot sales would, would include, so.
Um, I'll move resolution twenty-four twenty-seven.
Second. The motion is second. And resolution, any other discussion or questions? Anyway, we're gonna have a many conversations on this, so this would be good to get that up. Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David will be I, thank you, Craig. Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-eight approving the appointments and committees to twenty twenty-four, got some updates in there.
Yep, so this is just an update to, uh, the resolution that we pass at the beginning of every year for. The appointments to boards and commissions, um, with. Uh, council member Paul being added about halfway through the year, we wanna get him. Involved in some of those boards, we also have a little bit of turnover, um, with some of. The residents on those boards, some people drop out. Or get added throughout the year, so this is just, um, a list of all of the city appointments and just getting that shorted up and getting everyone included.
I'll move resolution twenty-four twenty-eight.
Motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
All right, Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David is I. Let's get that cleaned up. Item H is a request to approve the updated vacation leave policy. Um, there's some changes made in that, who's taking? Elizabeth?
I can, yes, I can, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so we discussed this at a work session earlier this year about updating our vacation leave policy, this kinda came about when we changed our. City leave policy earlier this year, but essentially the city used to front-load a vacation, um, this would move us to an accrual. Uh, process, so this would not go into effect until January first, um, twenty twenty-five. But then it also does change the vacation leave amounts. Hearing feedback from staff, um, staff. Wanted to know if there's a way that they could, um, kinda move up the scale quicker on getting vacation when I discussed it with council. Um, you wanted me to write the policy in a way that helped retention of our staff, and so. Uh, there isn't dramatic change until you hit about that eight to twelve-year mark is where we see employees, um, gaining the most vacation from this policy. Uh, one thing that this policy does include, because employees, um, I've spoken with them. On numerous occasion during training sessions, um, there's a lot of concern just because they're used to front-loaded vacation and not accrual, so there is one. Um, exemption that during that first year, so during twenty twenty-five, we would allow them to go negative up to forty hours, as long as they would bring their balance to zero. Just in that first year while they were becoming acclimated to the accrual versus the, um, the front-loaded vacation.
Any questions on that, we, yeah, it's been a little bit since we had this conversation, and. Um, Elizabeth, you'd say, you know, from your department heads and things like that, is very amicable?
Yes, um, I would say I got positive. Um, feedback from all, all city staff, you know, we started talking about this earlier in the year because I didn't wanna spring it on them. So we've been able to work through it over the months, um, I believe every employee has been able to bring their concerns to me, and we were able to address that in this policy. And I would say that I have about one hundred percent support from city staff on this.
Any questions, council?
No. I did have a question in respect to, on the termination part, if their balance is negative. Is it stated anywhere, is in here, cause I didn't see it about. The difference being taken from their last paycheck upon termination or something?
I did not, we thought about putting in a clause like that, um, I did not, just because the way it's been, because it's always been front-loaded, that. It's never been like that in the past, so essentially an employee could be front-loaded a hundred and sixty hours of vacation on January first, use that, and then they could essentially. Leave the city, um, after they use that hundred and sixty hours, you know, within their first month, and so just because. Um. We, we've had issues like that, I didn't, I did not include that.
Okay.
Anything else? Guys, thank you, staff and Elizabeth for getting that cracked out, very much appreciated. Um, go to vote, Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
We need a motion.
What did we make a motion, I'm sorry.
Um, make a motion to approve the updated vacation policy.
A second.
Yeah, motion and a second, thank you.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
And David is I. All right, let's talk then. But item I, the association presentation for their C F twenty-four.
Jesus, council, uh, thank you for allowing us to come tonight with. Uh, in front of you, we have our S C twenty-four. Um, this S C twenty-four has to be into the state by August first. Um, I know I talked to you guys a little bit, talking about having a. Work session come August seventh. Uh, with this name to be in August first, we're not gonna be able to have that work session in time and have it in in time. So with that being said, we have filled out the S C twenty-four for this year. We have left the benefit level at seventy-three hundred, and on the last page, it will show you that there is zero, uh, required contribution coming from the city. So right now, um, looking to get this approved by the city council. And I'm hoping that with approving this one and having our work session come August seventh. Uh, we could possibly come to next month's council meeting and look for a annual benefit increase. Numbers, right now, I'm not gonna list those off, but it's definitely in the budget for what we have so far. Uh, made in the market this year to be able to make that any annual benefit level increase. Any questions?
Anything from council for? Mister committee. In front of you.
No.
All right.
We just need to move approval.
We're gonna take a motion to approve.
Um, I'll move to approve the S C twenty-four. And we'll, uh, discuss it at the work session.
For future.
Second.
Motion in a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Otherwise, we'll go to vote, Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
And David, I'm staying.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't make any of your friends talk. All right, council, we're gonna move on to planning commission item A, which is a resolution twenty-four dash twenty-nine approving the land use plan amended.
So bear with me as we get through planning commission, um, all of them. Are related to the same plat application. We just, in order to approve the plat, we have to change the zoning, in order to change the zoning, we have to amend the land use plan. So we have to kinda work it in reverse order till we finally get to the plat. So, um, starting out with A, this is. A request to amend, uh, the city's current future land use map. The official future land use map was approved as part of the twenty-ten comprehensive plan. Future land use in Pine Island looks very different now than it did in twenty-ten. Um, council is in the process of updating. Our comprehensive plan and hoping to issue a twenty-twenty-four comprehensive plan that would have a new future land use map that would look very different from the old one. Um, the parcel in question, um, is owned by Jim and Pat Walter, it is the parcel just south of their homestead. Um, the applicant Seth Fries is looking to plat that for a new subdivision. Um, the subdivision he's requesting would be an R three zoning, which would be considered medium to high density residential. The current future land use plan from twenty-ten has that area as commercial. We are asking that, that future land use plan be amended to change that parcel to. Medium slash high density residential to fit, um, the plan of for development. The. All of the area to the west in the updated future land use plan from twenty twenty-four will match that medium-high residential. So it will fit in and it will be contiguous to, um. That land use going forward. Um, the parcel to the east that the city purchased, that will remain commercial, uh, that won't be affected by this, it'll simply be. That one parcel just south of their home. So I guess, I don't know if Craig has any other. Things to add on this portion of it, but we're just asking that council approve the resolution to. Amend the future land use plan, so we can then amend the zone.
I'll move approval for resolution twenty-four twenty-nine.
Second.
A motion in a second, like Steven says, this is. It's like tying up loose end, rarely working reverse. Get it cracked out, so. Uh, a motion in a second on that, Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
And David is I, which brings us to item B, ordinance number one seven zero, zoning map amendment for Pine Bend.
So again, now that, that future land use plan has been amended, um, that allows for us to review. The zoning and amend the zoning, um, just as a blanket statement for all three of these items, they were all held. Um, before the planning commission on July ninth, all three of them have public hearing requirements, all three of them have public hearings. Um, we received nothing but positive feedback, um, regarding the plat and regarding, uh, the development going forward up there. Um, we had a few individuals stop by City Hall, just who had received the notice, curious what the plans were out there, um, and all the feedback we got was very positive from the neighbors. Um, so again, reviewing ordinance one seventy would amend the. Zoning map of the city, the parcel is currently zoned ag. Um, it's not developed, the future land use is housing commercial, but as it currently stands, it's just an ag parcel. We are requesting that it be rezoned to R three, which is our urban residential district. Um, a possibility for the housing development up there would be twin homes. So this R three zoning designation allows for twin homes or dual-family homes. Um, R three also has the most. Or the best fitting lot size regulations for these type of homes, uh, that would fit in there quite nicely. Um. There is a list in our city codes, in code eleven point one six subdivision three E, um, that lists five major factors of consideration for rezoning. All five of those factors are listed in the resolution in bold. Um, it does meet all five of those factors, I could certainly rattle them all off for you if you'd like, otherwise, again, they're in bold in that resolution. So again, the public hearing requirements were met, so we are requesting approval of ordinance one seventy to rezone that property from ag to R three.
I'll move ordinance one seventy, approval.
Second. A motion in a second to, for ordinance number one seven zero, uh, we've been talking about this property for some time, so this would be. Another item, we can check off the list there. Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
And David is I. Pass. Resolution twenty-four dash thirty, which is approving the summary publications for ordinance number one seven zero. In going back into the newspaper.
Yep, so this just allows us to publish that rezoning ordinance, um, a summary of it, so we don't have to print the whole thing. Again, the full copy of that will be available at City Hall.
I'll move resolution twenty-four thirty.
Second.
Motion in a second, Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
And David is I, which brings us to item B. Is a resolution twenty-four dash three one approving Pine Bend preliminary whack.
So this is kind of the final step in that process, um, we received a preliminary plat from Seth Fries, um, he hopes to plat a Pine Bend subdivision. In that parcel, um, now that it is updated to R three, the possible use of twin homes would be allowed. Um, the city held a public hearing in regards to that preliminary plat. Seth and representative for the Walters both appeared, um, gave their comment. The planning commission, um, did move to recommend the approval of the preliminary plat pending. The. Required documents be filed prior to the final plat, I know Craig has been working with Seth's engineer from W S E. Um, to get all of the appropriate documents, um, some of the things that are required are utility plans, uh, grading plans, and geotechnical reports. Um, I don't know how far Craig wants to dive into those, but I know he had a few notes on those.
Yeah, mayor and council, um, won't dive too deep in on them, but we did, um, have six, um, recommended conditions of approval, and those are listed in the staff report, so. Um, if you have any questions on those, we can go through them, otherwise, uh, we would ask that, uh, those be incorporated into the.
I have a question in regards to like the, uh, park space for this subdivision. It said it could be a cash option versus space, what was? Anything discussed on that?
Not at this time, um, I'm assuming. The development agreement where those terms are come to, um, will be part of that final plat.
Thanks.
Any other questions, council?
I'll move resolution twenty-four dash thirty-one.
Second.
A motion in a second on four, any other discussion? Otherwise, Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
And Dave is, uh. Which brings us into Public Works and Engineering, our pay estimate number eight for one hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-four cents. To went to construction for the twenty twenty-three southwest street improvement project.
Yep, mayor and council, this is for, uh, work that has been completed this, um, uh, this spring, and. Um, includes some punch list items, some between this pavement that was, uh, the final lift had gone down, so, uh, looking for, uh, motion to approve this pay request.
I believe just for. Um, just a comment, I believe this is one of the final pay estimates, however, this does not include the final retainer. Um, to be released to the contractor until everything is. Cleared at our set site.
Okay.
I'll move pay estimate eight.
Second.
Motion in a second for pay estimate. Need a discussion. Everybody's Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
And David is I. Convinced of you. Legal, Bob, do you have anything you want to add tonight?
Wow, took took me a long time to get to the, uh, unmute. Sorry. Uh, yeah, that was long, that was hard. Uh, no, I don't. Uh, things are going well. You know, uh, I've talked a little bit about, um, uh, the cannabis regulation stuff that's moved forward. We we actually are now getting stuff from the state. There is a proposed, uh, zoning ordinance from the state. I, so I think, uh, just a heads up to the council. Uh, you'll have to actually, uh, address some proposed ordinance language about. Cannabis sales regulation in the future because we now actually have from something from the state, but for now, no, there's nothing, uh, no- nothing in front of you and. Um, nothing to report from legal. Thanks, mayor.
Thanks, please.
Thanks, Bob.
I'll move claims.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
And David is I. We'll get on to department updates here. Um, administrator, did you want to add anything to your summary?
No, I'll just leave everything in my report.
Sound good. Ms. Rachel.
Hi.
We children have been busy up there.
Children have been busy. Um, hi, I'm Rachel Gray. I'm the librarian here in town. And yeah, we've had over three hundred kids register for summer reading this year. And Heidi expects to be out of at least one, if not two, with the different prizes she's offering this week. So we do have alternate prizes. Don't don't delay though to get a minute if you're doing the summer reading challenge sheets. Been a lot of fun around the library. Um, those challenge sheets will be, uh, accepted through the end of August. So once school starts. Summer reading will officially end, but she does have programming through the end of July, so take a look at our website for that. Um, otherwise, I would just like to highlight the fact that we're working on a strategic plan right now. And I did bring copies of our survey for that. If anyone would like to fill that out, we would love to hear from everyone in the community. Otherwise, you can fill that out on our website. Um, we've got a link, um, right on top of it, both our Facebook page and our webpage. Um, it's a three year plan that we're working on with Selco, which is our regional library office. Um, and so they're kind enough to deal with all of the collection of surveys and putting them all together in a report for us. We have already gotten eighty responses, which is pretty much blown my mind since the beginning of the month. Um, and we'll be accepting those, um, replies for another week, so I think next Monday is our cutoff day, so. Let me know if you have any questions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works, we wanted to add.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank, uh, Public Works staff during the flooding. I'm the guy who's put in a lot of long hours. Uh, they did a great job. I want to thank them.
Yeah, great job.
Man in the pumps twenty four. At the time, it's all like that. And. E D A. Cheer for your fire department. Good. Things are rolling up there. Like that, everybody's cheerful. I like it. Um, Sergeant had to leave. Otherwise, don't forget to take a survey from the library and please get that filled out. That'd be great. How do I able to take a motion to wrap it up?
So moved.
Second.
And Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David is I. Thank you, everybody.